All right, tomorrow we get started. It is seven thirty on January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Conde Order, the council meeting. The first up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Alder Allen?
He is going to probably be late with excuses.
Thank you. Alder Radifrata?
Here.
Alder Gerhardt?
Here.
Alder Herbst?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'm moving right along to public appearances, non-agenda items, appointments. We do have one new appointment. Brian Russell, who is here in chambers, if you want to come on up, Brian. Appointment for the Police and Fire Commission. We have a vacancy, but unfortunately because of untimely death of a member. But Brian is interested in serving. Do you want to tell us just a little bit about yourself and why you're interested?
Sure. Again, my name is Brian Russell. For about twenty-one years now, I've lived in Fishburg. I actually live in the Highlands of Seminole neighborhood. I'm a U.S. or a military veteran. I have about twenty-five years of experience in strategic financial and risk oversight in the private and public sectors. Currently, I work in a governance role at the State of Wisconsin Investment Board. And let's see, why the PFC? Well, I feel very strongly about fairness and impartiality being part of the decision-making process, especially when those decisions involve personnel. If given the opportunity, I'm confident that based on my core values and my years of oversight experience that I will do an effective job in serving the Fishburg community as a member of the Police and Fire Commission.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions at all? Jim?
Hi, how you doing? Welcome. What components are involved in public safety tactics?
Public safety tactics.
Did you say you trained them in the Marines?
Yeah, that's about thirty years ago, but that was largely involved. It was more those trainings, it was largely around more of corrections. So part of what my unit was called to do at times, we'd set up makeshift corrections if we needed to, you know, have some or detain some element of hostile individuals in those types of communities. So it was really more so detainment, detention of individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Julia.
Yes, hi, Brian. This is Alder Julia Radifrata. So can you explain me how your military background is gonna, you know, is gonna help or is gonna guide the PFC?
Well, from my perspective, you know, having served my country in uniform, I certainly value the men and women who serve in a public safety role. And I think from that aspect, although I've never served in law enforcement or in fire, you know, I have had the privilege of serving in uniform. So I think that gives me a perspective on one hand versus a citizen who's never been in a uniform before. So that's, I think, the part that I feel in turn, fear strongly about that I believe that will help me navigate through this new, this new opportunity.
All right, anyone else or someone like to do a motion? Dave?
Brian, I don't know. Personally, I've read through your resume and I think you're extremely qualified for this position. I want to thank you for your willingness to step up and serve.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve or anyone else wants to say anything?
I move approve. Second?
All right, moved by Jim, seconded by Dave. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Thank you very much. I think Sarah Olson's already been contacted to a little bit and she'll continue to give you information about Alcoa Medians and things like that.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I do not have anything for non-agenda items, so we can move along to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move. Motion to approve.
By Joe and seconded by Randy. All right. Is there anything that anyone wants to take out of the consent agenda and do separately? Gabriela?
R-oh-one-twenty-two, which is number seven.
All right, anything else? Seeing nothing else, then all in favor of approving everything except for Resolution R-oh-one-twenty-two, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, those are approved. And what's, Gabriela, on this one, would you want to do?
Yeah, my, it was just mostly a question. I was just curious if there was a reason why it wasn't referred to transportation and transit? Is it just because it was an amendment or? I just wondered if there was a reason why it wasn't referred.
Yeah, I think that's probably the biggest thing is it's really amending a current contract and a current project at this point in time. It's already kind of been more or less approved, I guess. I mean, obviously there's changes to it, but yeah, it was already approved. It's just the changes. All right.
Sorry.
Yeah, Chad, you want to add something?
Alder Gerhardt, I can add some additional information to that. Obviously, the project has been approved in scope by the council. And because of the project being split into two different phases, one of the contributing factors to that being some grant money from the Department of Transportation being available in two thousand and twenty-four is really what's driving this amendment because it's gonna require two bidding processes and a couple of other things that are being duplicated. So that's really what's driving this.
Would you like to still do a motion to approve it then?
Yep, I'll move to approve it as part of the consent. Or is it approve it or?
Just approve, I guess, to refer, refer it.
Move to refer it, yes. Move to refer it.
Is there a second? Signed by Randy. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Going on to administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all had an enjoyable holiday season. Two thousand and twenty-two is off to a busy start here at City Hall. I have a few items of note. First one being, I think Alder Gerhardt had shared this already to the group, but the city is presenting its urban service amendment request to CARPSY on Thursday evening, July, I'm sorry, Freudian slip there, I wish it was July at this point. January thirteenth at seven P.M. That is via Zoom and the link is available via the CARPSY website. Or if you have some trouble locating it, I can send it your way if you have an interest in attending that, that presentation. From the clerk's office, there will be no primary in February based upon the election papers that were filed. So there, again, just to reiterate, no primary in February. Election will be in April. And two more items. The planning and zoning administrator position has been filled by Deanna Schmidt. She is coming to us from Pasadena, Texas, where she is the current director of planning there. She will begin her role with the city on January thirty-first. And for anyone wondering, Pasadena, Texas is a Houston metropolitan area suburb. And then finally, obviously with COVID continuing to be very significant in our community and area, I just want to relay to the council that we continue to monitor the situation with our internal work group. We have had quite a number of staff either testing positive and or in or out of work due to being close contacts or potentially symptomatic since the new year. So far, it has not significantly impacted our operations, but we are seeing some at least minor impacts at this point in time. The library and the senior center are modifying some of the services in which they offer, but no one is, is closing at this point in time or anything of that nature. We will continue to monitor staffing capabilities. And if we come to a situation where we are having difficulty providing appropriate staff for the programs or services offer that we offer, we'll have to consider some modifications at that point in time. But I'll see you, certainly keep you all posted. So that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Chad? All right, seeing none, we can move on to planning commission. Randy, go ahead.
All right, motion, motion to approve Resolution R-oh-one-two-dash-two-two was PP-dash-two-four-one-five-dash-twenty-one. Resolution approving preliminary plat request, PP-dash-two-four-one-five-dash-two-one by David, excuse me, Fahey, Agent for Fahey Land LLC and Fahey, Fahey five-three-seven-zero LLC for approval of the High Field Reserve Preliminary Plat to sub-divide property located south of Nobel Drive in Section fifteen, Outlot eight Fahey Fields and part of Lot two CSM nine-eight-nine-six.
Is there a second? Signed by Dave. And did planning commission approve?
Plan commission approved.
All right, we've got both Chris Heller's and Brian Munson here. If you'd like to come up and I think we've, I think this group has heard about this project before, if you are, give us an update, that'd be great.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us tonight. We're just here to, as we're marking kind of the midway point through the approval process and we're working through the S.I.P. and preliminary plat here coming up. We're making good progress in working with staff and working through all the questions and comments that have been, come forward so far. And we're staying on schedule to hopefully get started here this spring with delivering more single family over into what used to be Fahey Fields, but is now going to be High Field Reserve. If you have any questions, feel free to, to ask away.
All right, anything you want to add, Randy?
No, nothing at this point.
All right, any questions or comments? Dave?
Just a general, guys, has there, has there been any red flags or things that have come up, you know, caused you to stop and pause and, and you figure out, well, we didn't, we didn't consider this? Have there been any, been any of those items like that?
No, no, it's just, it's more about working with staff and trying to come up with the most efficient layout with our carriage lane or the alley product and just how the utilities fit versus a typical roadway section where, you know, everything's right down the middle of the road. It's pretty cut and dry. Well, there's a, it's a real science to the alleys because you don't have much room to work with. And then, once you get all, all the underground utilities and you have to come and build the houses without, you know, sinking an electrical transformer or destroying a sewer lateral, so every, every inch is accounted for. And that's what staff with the assistance of Chad has done a good job of really just sitting down so we can strategically plan, you know, every inch, linear inch of, of the alleyway underground work, so. Yep.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none. Someone do a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, we did that, we started with that, sorry. Planning commission is, we're gonna do it the other way. It's been a while since we've had a meeting. All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. That piece anyway. Next one, Randy?
Thank you. Yes, a motion to approve ordinance two-zero-two-two-dash-zero, or excuse me, I think it's O-dash-zero-three, formerly RZ-dash-two-four-one-six-dash-two-one-A, zoning ordinance amendment granting general implementation plan zoning for the High Field Reserve Residential Development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Jim and planning commission approve?
Plan commission approved.
All right, anything you want to add to this, Randy?
Well, there's nothing, great deal to add. It's really a rezoning from, from AS, which is Small Lot Agricultural District, and AT, Transitional Agricultural District, to PD, GIP, which is Plan Development District General Implementation Plan. So it's really rezoning for the most part.
And related to the project that we just discussed.
That's correct, yes.
All right, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that one's approved. Next one?
Okay, make sure I get my bearings here. Next one is motion to approve ordinance two-zero-two-two-dash-O-dash-zero-four, formerly RZ-dash-two-four-one-six-dash-twenty-one-B, zoning ordinance amendment approving rezone request, RZ-dash-two-four-one-six-dash-twenty-one-B by David Fahey, Agent for Fahey Land LLC and Fahey five-three-seven-zero LLC to rezone from AS, Small Lot Agricultural District, and AT, Transitional Agricultural District, to RL, Low Density Residential District, to allow for a school site on property located south of Nobel Drive in Section fifteen.
Second.
Signed by, is that Gabriela? All right, did this approve, get approved?
Plan commission approved.
All right, and you want to speak to this?
Yeah, it's rezoning again for the school site, which is properly located on Nobel Drive in Section fifteen.
Yeah, in the same neighborhood we've been discussing.
Same neighborhood, yes.
That's for that school. All right, any questions or comments on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved as well. Next one, Randy?
All right, the next one. Motion to approve ordinance two-zero-two-two-dash-O-dash-zero-one, formerly RZ-dash-two-four-one-nine-dash-twenty-one. This is a zoning ordinance amendment approving rezone request, RZ-dash-two-four-one-nine-dash-twenty-one by Stephen DeJong, Agent for Patrick and Thomas O'Brien, to rezone from AX, Exclusive Agricultural District, to the RR, which is Rural Residential District, a portion of the property along South Seminole Highway in Section seventeen, meets and bounds.
Second.
Signed by Gabriela, did planning commission approve?
Plan commission approved.
And you want to speak to this one?
Uh, yeah, applicant is really requesting to rezone Lot four from AX to RR in Lot four, just a rezoning again.
And it's for what project?
Uh, this is for the Patrick, Patrick and Thomas O'Brien property on Seminole Highway.
Yep, and for the Edgewood College, so they can essentially?
That's correct, yes.
Sell that lot to Edgewood College.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Other questions or comments? Jim? Oh, okay, sorry. Anyone? Nope. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Next one?
Motion to approve ordinance two-zero-two-two-dash-O-dash-zero-two, formerly RZ-dash-two-four-two-zero-dash-twenty-one, zoning ordinance amendment granting specific implementation plan zoning for Lot fifty-three and Lot fifty-four Chapel Valley Plat.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Signed by Dave, and did planning commission approve this one?
Plan commission approved.
All right, I know we've got some people both here and online. Is there anything that you'd like to add? I know we've seen this project a few times. I don't think anything has changed from what we've seen previously. Nothing's changed, we're hearing. I think there's a couple people online, anything? Just want to make sure that you have an opportunity to say, talk to us, talk to it further. But like you said, like I said, we've been here plenty of times at this point in time. This is, for those at home, this is the two lots on McKee Farms Park that will be both memory care and assisted living. Any questions or comments from the? Yeah, go ahead. Yes.
No, we would just like to thank you, Michael Samuels, on behalf of Endev Development. We would like to thank you for all your time and attention and we look forward to hopefully being able to build these wonderful buildings for you. We'll wait for your vote. But if there are any questions, we have both our architect and engineer and also our operator available for any questions that might come up.
All right, Dave?
Do you anticipate, you know, residents there needing services at our senior center?
I would hope so. I mean, it's just to the?
So the question was, if you couldn't hear, is do they anticipate the residents in this building needing senior center services?
No, I mean, there might be some social activities that, that would be interesting to do, but no, I mean, we provide all of the services that they, that they need.
Okay, that's, I, the reason I bring it up, we're struggling, you know, we're struggling with transportation to our senior center and we're adding a lot of senior housing. So I want to talk to the developers upfront and?
They're really self-contained buildings.
Sounds good, thank you.
Gabriela?
Can the developer speak to the timeline? What is the, what does the construction schedule look like? When, when can neighbors expect to see action happening on the lots?
I'm not really the developer, I'm the operator, but we anticipate that we would be in ground as early as the weather is appropriate. It's about a twelve-month construction cycle.
Yeah, I know that, I know that. Oh, sorry, I saw that. So because, you know, the close proximity with the, the housing on the west side, you know, the Remington Park, I will ask the developer if they can, you know, when they start construction, if they can provide information to me and Gabriela and we can inform the neighbors about the updates, when the construction will start, where it's going to be the first phase, second phase, you know, so they are aware of what is going, what is going to happen in front of the houses. So I would really appreciate that. I think the project is great for the area. This is the, this is a project that fit the, the density that it was requested a couple of years ago from the neighbors in the area. So I think this is a great project and, and in order to keep the rest of the, you know, neighbors happy, I think to have, you know, an open communication of the project, it would be great.
Thank you, and we'd be happy to do that, of course.
Okay.
Gabriela, go ahead.
My understanding was that there was some requirements based on the type of facility to have community members on an input board for the process going forward. Is that true? And do you still need people on that, on that body?
We, these buildings are licensed by the state, the Department of Health, as CBRFs. And one of the requirements for licensing is if there is, you know, we are required to seek to establish a community advisory committee. There isn't always interest on the behalf of the community to be part of that, but we would do that both to satisfy that regulatory requirement and also because we like to, you know, have that as a, as a, as a way to have a relationship with our neighbors. So yes, it's not real early on in the construction phase, but we would advertise and hold meetings to see if people want to participate in a community advisory committee. And if there is a desire to do that, then we would have regular meetings, you know, indefinitely.
Okay. I, if you wouldn't mind keeping Alder Radifrata and I, at least, and if not the whole common council apprised of when that happens, I've definitely had a lot of questions from neighbors about how the facility is run. And I've answered them to the best of my ability based on the information that you've given me. But I definitely think there's some interest in these facilities and there might be interest in the board. So if you want to let me know when that is going to happen and what the timeline is and when their application dates are and those types of things, I do have people that I'm going to pass it along to and that might be interested.
We'd be happy to do that. We advertise it typically in the, in a, in a local newspapers as well as, you know, put things up at like City Hall if they'd let us. But we'll make sure that we do that specifically with, with, with this group as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, anything else? Seeing nothing else, then we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it and look forward to it.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much.
All right, anything else on planning commission, Randy?
No, I have nothing else.
All right, let's go to Public Works, Dave?
Let me get paged up here again.
All right.
All right, I move approval of Resolution R-two-oh-four-dash-twenty-one, approving a joint funding agreement with the U.S. Geological Society Survey, USGS, for the USGS Swan Creek Monitoring Station.
Second.
Signed by Gabriela, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
Did RCC approve?
Yes, indeed.
All right, do you want to tell us about what this is, Dave?
Well, we, you know, monitoring station for the stormwater flowing, flowing out of that area. And what this agreement does, it kind of firms up who's paying for what. You know, we had it previously and this kind of specified who was, who was responsible for, for what in this agreement and the costs. I don't, I don't recall all the specifics, but this has been before us previously and it had been re, like I say, reworked to tie up the loose ends on it.
So just kind of, kind of find this agreement that we have and has been going on so far. Okay. All right, questions or comments? Gabriela, go ahead.
I did just want to add that for anyone that's curious, this information that the Swan Creek Monitoring Station is collecting is publicly available online. If you search USGS Swan Creek Monitoring Station, it'll pop up really easily in Google results and you can see the data. And it's actually sub-daily, like you'll see multiple measurements per day. And then also there's like even a live camera feed of where it is, of what it looks like. And then as the years go on, you can actually compare it to previous years. So it'd be really cool to see this go on over the years. The data is only going back to June? I can't recall exactly when it was installed, but it was sometime this year. And anyway, it's kind of cool. Anyone that's kind of a data nerd, it's cool stuff, so go ahead and take Google search.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Next one?
Next up, I move approval of Resolution R-two-twenty-four, two-twenty-four-dash-twenty-one, purchasing two Bobcat Toolcats.
Second.
Signed by Randy, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And what's this one, Dave?
Parks Department is requesting this. We have, we have one of these and now we're up to over twenty miles of paths and trails that the parks are responsible for clearing. And we feel we, we need to have a second one of these to accomplish that work. They come with a number of accessories, you know, plows, different, different things. So they're a very versatile tool and we've, we've reached a point, you know, with the amount that we have to maintain, that we need a second one. One of the existing one will be traded in and depending on what we get for that, we'll determine, you know, if we're able to get a few more accessories for the, for the second one. Does that sound right, Jim?
Yes, you're correct.
All right, any questions or comments?
I would just, I would just add, you know, we're not hiring a new person to operate this, that person is here already. So it's not, it's not additional person that's going with the Bobcat.
All right, anything else? Not seeing anything. So all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Anything else for Public Works, Dave?
Just one, one thing I'll add, you know, it's January, so it's not really on anyone's mind, but we're looking at the issue of mosquitoes in our stormwater ponds. And, you know, we're, we're looking at some options to maybe improve the situation. Bill mentioned, you know, possibly some different birdhouses and we're also looking at maybe some different type of plants that would attract dragonflies around the, around we're also looking at maybe some different type of plants that would attract dragonflies around the, around the ponds. So this might be something, uh, we saw that the county executive had, had these grants for various things, so I'm going to be talking to parks. Maybe we can, maybe there's some we can apply grants for to, uh, um, to put some of this habitat around the ponds. I would just add, uh, one resident asked us to put in an aerator. Well, per DNR rules, these are settling ponds and we can't do that. It, um, it's, it's not compatible, plus uses energy, so, uh, you know, but at the same token, we, we don't want to just tell the residents, well, put more mosquito dope on, so we will, we'll try to come up with, you know, a strategy or a toolkit for, for dealing with these moving forward.
All right, thank you. Uh, before we go to Park Commission, I would ask if someone could make a motion to move Item eleven A two up to the next item on the agenda. And I ask because we have Lisa Heitman online, uh, from our police department and I don't want to have to have her sit through the rest of the meeting, so I thought if we could move that up for her, that would be, I think, appreciated by her anyways, so she can go on with her night.
I moved to move eleven A two, uh, to the next item on the agenda.
Second.
Sent by Randy. All in favor of ending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, so we will go to that. It's Finance, Randy, would you like to do a motion? Sorry, I put you on the spot there.
Yeah, caught me off guard here. All right, uh, not a problem. Uh, motion to approve Resolution R dash zero eight dash two-two, ratifying the twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-four collective bargaining agreement with WPPA.
Second that motion.
Sent by Dave. Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, uh, would you like to speak to it or Chad or?
Well, no, since because of the complexity and since he led the, uh, the, the committee, uh, City Administrator Chad Breckland will speak to it.
Thanks, uh, Randy. So, uh, this is the collective bargaining agreement with our police union. And, uh, we negotiated that, uh, contract in the fall, uh, leading up to mid-December. Uh, the negotiating committee from the city, uh, perspective was Alder Udell as the Chair of the Finance Committee, Alder Aratafrada as Chair of Personnel, Mayor Richardson, our City Attorney, our Human Resources Manager, our Finance Director, our Police Chief, uh, myself, and then we had outside Labor Council. And then obviously the, um, uh, Police Union had a, a Leadership Board, uh, and Negotiating Committee as well. So the highlights, uh, of the contract include a two percent raise in twenty-twenty-two, a two percent raise in twenty-twenty-three, and a three percent raise in twenty-twenty-three. Other notable changes include, uh, an increase in shift, shift differential, uh, a change in how we calculate, uh, who qualifies or the hours you worked in which qualifies for shift differential, um, an increase in uniform allowance, uh, an increase in the number of vacation days for officers, uh, with 20 years or more of service. Um, I think, uh, those are the main highlights. Uh, Officer Heitman, if there's any thing I'm missing in that summary, feel free to, uh, to add it. Um, and if anybody has any questions, let me know.
Officer Heitman, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, I think Administrator Breckland covered it all.
All right, thank you.
I, I should add that, uh, the Police Union ratified the contract on December fifteenth, uh, so it's, uh, now obviously in front of the council for your consideration.
All right, any questions or comments at all? Seeing none, we can go ahead and go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, that is approved. All right, thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, back to the Park Commission. Julia.
Okay, one second. Okay, one second, please.
Okay. No, they just met last week, I think it was.
Yeah, so we met on January sixth, um, and then, uh, we discussed several topics, um. Uh, one is we have a presentation for the North Fish Hatchery Road. They have the final design. So, um, the, our, uh, our community planner, Wade Thompson, was, uh, did a presentation along with the design team. Uh, um, they, uh, we don't have that information in the packet, but it was, um, we're supposed to have the slideshow and I will tell you that the project is coming. And the final design is, is, is incredible. So, um, so the Park Commissioner asked a lot of question about, you know, the timeframe, the amenities, um, um, we also, uh, have people from the Sari Foundation because they are going to be involved in the project with the design of the bike, uh, track pump, um, that, uh, the, the design, um, is, uh, is, is kind of like an skating board where, uh, not only the skater, but also bicycles can be, can join the, can share the, the, the path. So it's an amenity that is going to bring, um, people from different parts of the city or other communities, uh, because it's very unique. So, so the ne- the next step, uh, for this design is the team will, uh, the design team will work on to produce a budget with, uh, to determine how much it's going to cost because, as you know, there was some inflation. Uh, the inflation by construction cost increases, so that one is going to affect the, the budget that we, um, originally we discussed at council. And then the idea is that by the first quarter of twenty-twenty-two, we are going to release the bid, the bid. And the construction will start in June of twenty-twenty-two. So this is the, the timeframe. Um, when I get the slideshow, I want to share with you so you have an idea, um, about, uh, the final design and it's, I'm going to tell you, it's incredible. Um, so the other thing that we discussed, um, so was the pre-application from the Tracy Way North project. So Mr. David Gerbers, uh, who is the Vice President of Plesco, uh, was in attendance and then he provides, um, a vision and the idea of the project. And then we discussed, um, uh, we discussed the park land dedication and park improvement fees, uh, for this project and some of the option about, um, what, um, you know, they are planning to swap, uh, a piece of land for the park, the improvement, um, for the park dedic- park dedication land. So we discussed, um, about that swap land and, and that is going to be, that piece of land is in the north, in the south part of Tracy Way beside the senior housing where the tennis courts are. But, um, but they need to be more approval from the, you know, for the, um, the development group. So, but that one is an option, um, and that park dedication, um, the swap of this parcel could be used when we build the second phase for the hub. Um, so, so it could be a win-win situation for the city, but we need to do more research about is, is that, uh, an option that it can be done. So also, um, we have spent a lot of time discussing the, um, the Stoner Prairie Park Design Consultant, um, um. So, it's Scott Endall, uh, Park Director, uh, he, uh, sent a R P for the design of this park. Um, it was advertised, uh, and served, and three firms, uh, provide proposal, uh, with the deadline, the deadline for this proposal were November seventeenth. So then a committee that it was, um, um, a committee was, uh, this, the, the review of this proposal. And then they provide to the Plan Commission, to the Park Commission, uh, which one of these proposals was the best or the, the one that they recommend. So you look at the package of the Park Commission, you will see the three company and they, uh, recommend EOR. This is, um, this is a company that the City of Pittsburgh use and this is also, they are also, um, uh, the design team for the hub. So there is a close relationship with the city. They understand the city needs. They, um, you know, they, uh, there is a relationship and also it was a lower's, uh, proposal. Um, so what else? And then, um, we discuss, uh, we are still continue working with the park and open space plan update. So we discuss a couple of email that we received from neighbors surrounded by the McKefon Park, um, and that's it. And then we went to the staff report that we review every month, um, but everything is in the packet, so that's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, moving on to Library Board, Jay is not here yet, so we'll keep moving on that one. Mission A, you well, Dave?
Um, no, no updates from December. Our meeting is, uh, Thursday at eight-thirty, so our next council meeting, I'll have an update again.
All right, RCC, Gabriela.
We met yesterday on Janu- January tenth, uh, for our first meeting of the year. We, uh, set the dates for the reci- recycling and shred events for the year. We're going to have a spring and a fall. Uh, spring one will be April ninth, which is a Saturday. The fall one is going to be October fifteenth, which is also a Saturday. And I'll probably just keep reminding y'all as we keep going, um, as we get closer to those dates. April will also have our, our traditional spring waterway cleanup, so when we have those finalized dates, I'll let you know and the locations that are options if you're interested in participating. We are also planning a public event, community event. Um, we're targeting May nineteenth, which is a Thursday evening. And it's going to be about, specific about invasive species in the area and kind of a walkthrough to be able to identify and, and learn a little bit more about um, those types of plantings and how you can help as a citizen. So more information on that to come. Um, and then Phil Groupie gave us a little update about our energy, our clean energy resolution goals because we're, we're aiming for a hundred percent renewable energy for the city by twenty-thirty. Um, that was the resolution that was adopted in twenty-nineteen, so, um, we're actually doing pretty well. The solar, the O'Brien Solar Farm was not online all year next, last, last year, but it was for part of the year. So we're still doing calculations, but it looks like our renewable, um, contribution for the city will be over thirty percent, um, when, when all said and done, which is pretty good. And then, um, this year with it being online fully, we expect that we may exceed forty percent renewables for the city. Um, so Phil can give an update la- later on, but I just thought those are kind of exciting numbers, um, in the works that you should all be aware of. And then in the Pittsburgh Star for January, um, the Chair of RCC Run French, uh, did a, uh, an article about dark sky compliance, um, and, and that importance to, to city policy. And the RCC is going to do some research on a dark sky ordinance and what that might look like in the City of Pittsburgh if we did want to pass that. And that is all.
All right, thank you. And what about TTC?
Transportation Transit is meeting, uh, this Thursday, January thirteenth at, let me double check. I believe it starts at six P M. Yeah, no, six-thirty. So this Thursday, January thirteenth at six-thirty P M. We, our main agenda item will actually be reviewing the, the, the Metro Transit Service Agreement between City of Madison and City of Pittsburgh. That was referred in the packet today, so it's R oh four twenty-two, in case anyone's curious about taking a look at that before we discuss it at the next meeting. And we'll be discussing it more, um, more tomorrow night. That's all.
All right, thank you. And Cedar, I don't know if Julia or Jim is going to do an update?
Our next meeting is January twenty-seven.
All right, then how about Ag and Rural Affairs?
Uh, there is no update, uh, but the Ag and Rural meet next Tuesday, the eighteenth at four P M.
Okay, EMS, Shannon?
Um, we haven't had a meeting and, um, I haven't gotten any communication saying that we're going to have a meeting. I mean, I would assume we'd have one by maybe Thurs- next Thursday, but I haven't heard anything yet, so I'm going to have to reach out to Patrick.
Sounds good. What about Bicycle Committee, Joe?
Sure, um, just giving a heads up that, um, per the advice of the Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce as well as the Bike Committee, uh, and Bike Pittsburgh, um, Phil Groupie is going to be, uh, submitting an application for, um, to the State of Wisconsin for the Transportation Alternatives Program. It's a pretty big grant, um, and if awarded, um, it would need to be supported by, you know, philanthropy and other types of fundraising, but it would be able to provide, um, potential, you know, B-cycle or other sort of rentable bike, bike, um, infrastructure in, um, various parts of Pittsburgh. So really exciting potential grant we're going for and, um, you know, hopefully we'll be able to get it as well as engage the business community. I think it would be a really good investment opportunity for Pittsburgh. It'll probably bring a lot of, um, you know, positive attention to the committee and help us on our journey towards gold.
All right, uh, going on to Trade Advisory Committee, Gabriela.
No report.
All right, Landmarks Preservation, Shannon?
Uh, no report.
All right, Housing Advisory, uh, Joe, I believe.
Yeah, so, um, we met, uh, the committee met in December and there was a presentation from the Oshkosh. Um, it's called the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, but it's, uh, different from our Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative in that it focuses on, um, both the ability for folks to be able to put a down payment, uh, on how, on, um, uh, purchasing a home and, um, get a grant for that as well as providing, um, renovations, um, and improvements needed to their homes. So, um, the minutes should be going up pretty soon and, um, you can also feel free to watch the presentation on Back TV. Uh, the next meeting is going to be March fourteenth at five P M.
Excellent. Healthy Neighborhoods, uh, Jay is not here yet, but I believe that they are probably going to be asking for applications soon. But I don't know if you've, know anything, Chad, but usually in the spring is when we throw the call for people to apply for those grants.
Yeah, can I give you an, a, a date?
Go ahead, Julia, sure.
Yeah. So, yeah, so we, we send a couple of email to the members of the committee and, uh, we are planning to meet the first week of February. We are still, uh, determining the date, um, we are going to discuss there a couple of, you know, now that we are a committee, we have more besides the grant process and the gra- you know, we, we also have a hub, the Team Center, another project under our umbrella. So, so the idea is to, uh, have an update of all of those projects and also start working with, um, uh, the grants award for twenty-twenty-two.
Excellent, thank you. Finance Committee, Randy?
Finance Committee, approval of bills. Uh, Finance Committee reviewed the, uh, the following. Detailed review of all checks issued. Checks one-two-two-eight-two-six through one-two-two-nine-two-five for the period of December first to thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Totalling two million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and one cent. Uh, eight B, detailed review of all ACH payments for the period of December first through the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, totaling four hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-three cents. Moving on to eight-two of the agenda, motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution R dash two-three-eight dash twenty-one, authorizing legal services in the, uh, defense of Hy-V Inc., excessive tax assessment lawsuit.
Second that motion.
Sent by Dave. Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, do you want to talk about it or do you want?
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll make the attempt at it, but, uh, maybe, uh, uh, Chad will step in afterwards. Uh, but this is regarding the, uh, Hy-V, uh, which has, uh, sued the City of, uh, Pittsburgh for allegedly ex- allegedly alleging excess tax assessments for years twenty nineteen and twenty-twenty. Uh, those two years were, the lawsuits were withdrawn. Uh, this resolution is for the year twenty-twenty-one. And, um, and it's, uh, even though this property is in TID six, uh, which is expected to close in twenty-twenty-two, uh, it will, the legal costs will be charged to the insurance fund. And, um, those, uh, there's, there's enough, uh, sufficient dollars or balance in the, uh, uh, insurance fund to absorb those costs. And, um, I think that's about all I have. You want to add to that, Chad? More specific detail?
I think you have the general, uh, gist of it. I'd have to, um, recall exactly what Misty had mentioned in regards to the, uh, uh, legal costs. My recollection was is that we could bill those or, uh, fund those through TID six up until the point in which the. My recollection was is that we could bill those or, uh, fund those through TID six up until the point in which the final audit had taken place. And then any expenses after that would require, uh, payment by the city, either through its insurance fund or potentially, uh, through, uh, setting aside money from the TID six closure as well. Could be another option to potentially fund that. But otherwise, Alder Udell, you have summed it up, uh, appropriately. The, uh, two-year tax lawsuit that had previously been in front or presented to the council was withdrawn by Hy-Vee, uh, although they have already, uh, uh, indicated, uh, a desire to challenge their twenty twenty-one assessment. So this resolution basically authorizes the, uh, the city to, to contract with the, um, attorney that's represented us before in our, uh, tax assessment cases.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Then all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? That is approved. Anything else for finance?
No, nothing else.
Alright, Personnel, Julia.
Uh, we are meeting tomorrow.
Excellent. Public Safety, anything, Dave?
We had no meeting, uh, no agenda items, so we'll be meeting before the next council meeting.
Alright, uh, going on to reports. Uh, one main thing, I was looking through current vacancies. We've got a couple. Border Review, that's kind of always a challenge to find someone for Border Review. We do have an opening there. Uh, I know that there is also opening on Seda that Mike and Joyce are trying to fill right now. And then there are two option, or two openings on Healthy Neighborhoods still, and those would be good ones to get filled as soon as possible. One is someone who li- is a resident who lives on North Fish Hatchery Road. The other one, though, is a resident at large, so anyone from the city actually would be available for that one. So it'd be good to get those filled soon. And that is all for now, but in April, a lot of things come up for reappointments. And that's where if people don't wanna be reappointed, that we will probably have more openings at that point in time. So that's the main thing that I had from my report, but I can turn it to District One is, I believe, who we start with? Oh, Julia, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, can I ask a question about, um, you know, uh, regarding the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative? When we approved the, the, um, the composition of the, uh, the committee, um, before we, we, we used to have a person that work in the, in the area, but he wasn't a, a resident of Fitchburg. And when we made, I don't know why, um, uh, we, uh, when we approved the composition, we removed that from the composition, and we lost a very good, um, uh, member, Nate. Uh, he was very active in the area, uh, in the North Fish Hatchery Road. So even though he, he's, he doesn't live in Fitchburg, but I know that we have some other committee where we have non-residents. So my question to you, Mayor, is, do you think that we can make an amendment to that composition and allow at least one person that, or, you know, a person that they work in the area doing some community development work in the healthy neighborhood, uh, area? Or don't, you know, so that one I want to ask to you and the rest of the council, what do they think about that?
Well, we can't have a discussion right now, but I know that when we formalized the committee, the reason that we did not have non-residents on there is because they're spending tax dollars. And so having someone who's not a resident dictating kind of how to spend tax dollars seemed like it would be inappropriate. So that's why that was removed. And we just approved that, and so I guess it seemed weird to me to, to change it again right away. But that was the primary reason that I remember from our discussions.
Okay, I didn't, I, I don't, I didn't recall that. Okay, makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Alright, uh, District One, Dave?
Uh, three things. Uh, first one, uh, on Williamsburg Way, apparently we have a one, one very large and, uh, well-fed coyote wandering around. I believe he's been probably, hopefully he's cleaning up the rabbits in my yard. But, uh, second, uh, we have, uh, on two of our streets, King James Way and Monticello Way, we have, um, in a neighborhood or resident groups getting signatures for traffic calming devices, uh, on those, those two streets. And third, we only had to wait until, um, till, um, uh, January second to have the first, uh, shooting incident, uh, on King James Way, and hopefully, uh, hopefully we don't have any more for quite a while. But, uh, somewhat disconcerting second day of the year, and we already get a, get an incident, so. And I, I was outside. I, I heard it when it happened, so, um, yeah, and it's al- it's always a little, it's always disturbing. I'll just say it's disturbing that, at the minimum. That's all I have.
Alright, Joe, go ahead.
Sure. Um, so with regards to, um, the, you know, requests for, you know, whether it be traffic calming, um, devices, just a reminder to folks that there is, um, also a form that can be, um, filled out on the website. So if you go to Neighborhood Traffic Concerns, um, under the city's website, there's a, um, pretty easy to fill out form as well in addition to, um, the signatures that are being collected. Um, also wanted to say that if anybody, um, ever notices, uh, street light that's out, um, you can call the city at, uh, six oh eight two seven oh four two six zero. Um, and it usually takes about a week to be able to, um, fix that. And then, uh, third, just a reminder that the, um, city, there is a landing page for the teen center study, um, and it actually allows for, um, public input. If you go to EQTbydesign.com slash engagement, um, you can watch the open house, um, that was reported on Fact TV. Um, you can also, uh, share feedback and sign up to receive, um, project updates. Um, the teen interns are meeting, um, twice a month. Um, they're gonna be meeting this Friday, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. Julia, District Two.
Uh, no report.
Alright, Gabriella.
I just wanted to, uh, once again, since it's winter and it's turning to snow again, to encourage people to find their local fire hydrant and shovel it out of snow. Um, if you, the fire department recommends three feet in all directions, which seems like quite a lot, but the whole idea behind digging it out is, in case of a fire, the fire department can immediately get to it and, and work on, on a hot, the house on fire, rather than having to dig it out first. And there was actually unfortunately a fire last year where they had to dig out the fire hydrant first. And as a result, the house basically was completely lost, whereas, uh, it might not have been completely lost had it been the other way around. So it really does happen, and so I would encourage you to find your local fire hydrant and dig it out, especially since now it's, there's quite a bit of snow on the ground, so doing it now before it snows again would be a, a good call and a good bit of exercise. So, uh, dig out those fire hydrants. Thanks.
Thank you. Shannon, District Three.
Um, no comment.
Alright, go on to District Four, Jim.
Nothing to report.
Alright, Randy?
Uh, no updates. Thank you.
Alright, then we will keep moving on. No unfinished business. Uh, one more direct referral, and it's finance. Randy, you wanna do that one?
Uh, yes. Motion to approve Resolution R dash zero-two dash two-two, amending the twenty twenty-two building inspection fee schedule.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella. Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
And are you speaking to this?
Sure. Not, uh, Chad can step in afterwards as well to add anything he'd like. Uh, but under the, uh, new, uh, construction and additions, uh, the minimum permit fees for, uh, trades on commercial projects is a hundred and fifty dollars. And, um, however, the plumbing is set at one hundred dollars, and in order to stay consistent, uh, the request is to move the plumbing, uh, licensing fee up to a hundred and fifty dollars to be consistent. Anything to add, Chad? Specifics?
Nope, you got it.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, any questions or comments? Yeah, Julia, go ahead.
Uh, do you have any idea how many of these, uh, license we award every year?
I don't have that information. I didn't see it in the packet either. Um, so this is obviously, uh, related to the, the, um, fee schedule with commercial projects specifically, so it would be tied to, to any commercial projects themselves. I don't, I couldn't tell you how many commercial projects where this applies.
Yeah, I'm just for curiosity. I want to know how big is, you know, how many?
I'd say it's probably under a hundred, maybe even under fifty a year. Yeah, if it's just commercial. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, then all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? Alright, that is approved, and we already did the other item under new business. Uh, tomorrow we have come to the whole meeting, Randy. Do you wanna speak to that at all?
Meet, uh, which is tomorrow, Wednesday, January twelfth. And, uh, the main, uh, emphasis is, uh, to discuss the ARPA funding. And, uh, Misty Dodge will present, and then council will have the opportunity to, uh, discuss it from there.
Alright, see all of you hopefully tomorrow night then. And next council meeting is regularly scheduled meeting in two weeks. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by, I guess Randy saying goodbye, Joe, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Alright, we adjourn. Happy New Year.